This conference will now be recorded.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Mitchell County Board of Supervisors meeting, February 25th, 2025. Meeting is available by GoToMeeting as well. We have an agenda in front of us. We have a motion to approve the agenda. I move to approve the agenda. Ham, any motion? Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Approve the minutes of the February 18th meeting and claims. Do you want to get a chance to read those?
Make a motion to approve the minutes, February 18th and the claims?
Mark, my motion. Is there a second?
I also have a second, yeah.
I have a second. Any further discussion?
Can I ask Rachel on the audit amount, the audit advance in the claims? Was that 31?
I don't remember the total that we pay. I think it's, is it 75% upfront, then we pay the rest once they come here?
So the $31,765 was the upfront?
And that also had on the amount to do the GAAP report, which was just over $5,000.
The $5,250. And what is the estimate for an annual audit from here on out? Or is it every year or every two years?
We did a three-year agreement. I wanted to look at.
The three years, okay. That's right. We approved that. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Roll call, Tom.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes. The county attorney is unavailable this morning. Doesn't look like sheriff is with us. Department head discussion.
Hi, guys. There's a quick update. What's going on? Copy your quotes. We're working on. Talked a little bit earlier about that. I'll talk about the phone system later. This Wednesday, which I guess is tomorrow, I have my second meeting with Liftoff, which is the corporation that's doing the government cloud transfer for the sheriff's office. What's nice about that is they're also going to go over all of our policies within Office 365 to make sure those are up to date, and it'll include training on my behalf as well to be able to manage that. So I look forward to that, both from coming into compliance and for myself being able to handle it. Treasurer's computers, I got one working for Janelle. So usually I give it a day or two to see what problems pop up. But this week I'm going to be giving those to the rest of the treasurer's department. So three additional computers, which I'm sure that one I put out is working just fine. The NAS device or the network storage device for the sheriff's office, I talked to Body Cam. It's being delivered today, and then I'll schedule with an engineer from them later this week. And that'll be the kickoff meeting and how we're going to go forward with that particular project. So that's what I've been working on, other than copy your phone stuff. Do you have any questions?
Any questions?
No.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Rachel.
I'll be right back.
Rachel has put on the agenda next Tuesday for discussion, possible action, copy your quote. And then also, Pam, are you going to have any sort of update, bringing to the board about your discussions with Joel and Ryan?
Yes, I could certainly do that. And as far as our IT process and where we're at in updates, as far as programs that have been updated. And with that, I think we also need to include backup for that position along with some other positions within a county, you know, in the event that someone is out of the office, that kind of thing. I think as a Board of Supervisors, we maybe need to discuss that moving forward. That may not be an emergency thing, but I think that's a good idea for us to have a backup plan.
Any other department head? Nope. We'll move on to number six, county engineer.
Morning.
Good morning.
Couple of updates. We had a letting for a bridge on February 18th to DOT. It's a bridge on Echo North of Highway 9. There were two bidders on it, the apparent little bidder, since I don't have a contract or any other information yet from the DOT. The apparent little bid was $498,494.64. And we tried to fit a box culvert in there, but we couldn't make that work, so we had to put a bridge in. So that's, we'll be having that contract come through. I'm hoping maybe by next week, it shouldn't take that long for them to get the paperwork out to us. Also, working on some plans for the March Avenue local road, March Avenue 340 and 390. Trying to find ways to stabilize that road. I know Jim's online, but trying to widen that road. We've got a lot of locations where it's already a V ditch, so we can't really widen it much more. So I'm trying to figure out ways to structurally support the shoulder because anticipate still trying to pave it 24 feet to 24. It's a 20-foot wide road with roughly two-foot shoulders. And what I'm trying to do is trying to pave it a full 24-foot width and still paint it. So we've got a paved shoulder instead of a rock shoulder, but I'm trying to figure out how to stabilize it. Gone through several ideas, and one idea was a full-depth reclamation of the road. But from the numbers I'm seeing from other people, it's very expensive to do. Very good stabilization of the road, but with the money we've got slated for that, that's more than what we anticipated just to pave it. So we're going to figure out a way to maybe stabilize the shoulders. On top of it and see what we can do there, but still working on that project. In the meantime, I sent you guys out an email last week with a link to a survey for our CHBP grant bridges. Maybe you've passed it along to other people, you know, maybe you haven't. They're trying to get all that data back by the end of the week here now. I've sent out requests for support letters too for several people, from as many people as I could fit in my email address that would help sway the decision. I think the whole point of this is to show the federal government that there's local support for replacing these bridges, and that's what the committees are trying to do. So hopefully it maybe filled out the survey, maybe passed it along to other people. I'm getting some letters back. I don't have a lot back, but it's kind of typical. We don't, some people don't participate in that and bringing the letters back to us. But in the meantime, they want us to get our 28E agreement signed and sent back. So there's two things on the agenda. One's a 28E, well, there's two things. One's the 28E agreement packet, which includes a resolution for supporting the project itself. So the 28E agreement is stating that the county supports the project and is going to work with the Iowa DOT and this other cities and counties to pay their share of the consultant fees for the consultant to put the grant together. And then I think it was Page, Pete.
Yeah, Pete.
Where there's a resolution to kind of agree to the 28E agreement and also to support the project. So we will be charged per bridge, so because we have two bridges in the program. Let's see, we have two bridges. I think there are one or two other counties that have two bridges and one county that has three out of those 33. So there are a few of us that are pretty fortunate to get some bridges. I know they're not very big bridges. I wished we were hitting our bigger bridges. But the way the funding works out, the way the grant's written for us this time is they want standard bridges, and we've got some non-standard bridges out there that need work too. So hopefully when the grants come out again, if they come out again, we can throw some other bridges on there. We don't really throw them on there. They're based on what our bridge inspections and our SIMs reports are. So with that, if you guys would like to approve that, I think that's in fact the DOT is going to be the, as part of our grant. So we'll need the resolution approved and the 28E agreement.
Do you have a resolution number?
1266-25.
Sir, motion to approve resolution 1266-25.
I will move to make that motion.
Ham, any motion? Is there a second?
I have a second.
Pam, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Do you have a second? Thank you. I think that's all I've got for an update this morning.
Any questions for the county engineer?
Thank you.
Thank you, Rich.
Thank you.
We will move on to discussion and possible action on upgrading phone system.
So I sent you guys a little better explanation of exactly why the monetary decision that I came with conclusion to, to show the numbers a little bit better exactly why. The biggest thing is that currently we pay $600 to OMU, roughly $600 to OMU to provide our phone service. If we were to go to the cloud, which is what that quote would be, it would end up being around $840 a month as compared to the $600. If you multiply that out by, say, five years, I would hope the system would last more than five years. But even if it were to five years, at about $14,500 is what it would cost after five years over what we're paying now. So that's where the cost savings comes in. It's a little bit down the road. The longer we keep the phone system, the more money we save, if that makes sense, on a monthly basis. So it's a little more expensive upfront, but over time, we can save quite a bit of money. So did you have any questions about that? I sent out the email with all those numbers. But I just wanted to be more clear on why I chose that from a financial situation.
I know you stated that you overprojected on the Iowa IT one.
Yes.
You put, correct me if I'm wrong, but you put 50 phones?
Correct.
You were looking at 30?
Yeah, I wanted to get, because we could add phones if we're going to have public health is another one. If we're going to add secondary roads, there's a couple. I just want, I won't just buy them to have them. It'll be more of a discovery process to get those. But I wanted to give you a number of the highest I think we would need to go with.
Okay.
Because there's ones like, you know, that one in the road.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So I have a question. Now, the installation on Gordon Flush versus the second alternative that we were just presented.
Yes.
So is there an installation team, so to speak, or support team when they go to install it on the weekend? You know?
Yeah, absolutely. That's all included in those labor dollars is the phone system team from the vendor.
Okay. So then, along with that, is there additional training? You know, are they coming in to train our people?
Yes, they are.
That's my question.
Correct, yes.
Okay.
That's correct.
And the service afterwards, I would assume, would be the monthly fee? So you have contact with them to, if there's any challenges or?
Yeah, and we will come into challenges as we do the project.
Sure, sure.
Just initially. But yeah, there's a team. They do phone systems. They've done them for counties before.
Okay.
So I'm comfortable with how well they can help us and me.
I did talk to Laura. She felt like that was comfortable, and she got to see the app in the 80. And then I did reach out to Joel, because I know they use this one as well over in North County. And he said that he thinks you're on the right track going with the 3CX. Do you guys think? When I decide today, you need more time?
Do I make a motion to go with Iowa IT for the phone system?
I second that.
Mark made a motion. Pam, second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Mark.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Motion passes.
If I can just say one more quick thing, there's two other things IT-wise. I'm working with the sheriff. We have an agreement on how we're going to handle new computers over there for the Windows 11 process. We spoke on how we're going to handle that. I can start that next week. I gotta do treasurer stuff today. And then also I'm attending the Heartland Insurance Technical Meeting on Thursday as well. You guys can tell me if you want. It's gonna be a lot of fun. No, but it's what I do know I'm working on.
Thank you.
Well, Mitchell County Public Health update.
Good morning.
Good morning, Jason.
We just had a meeting last, a week ago, so coming to give an update on the public health side of things and kind of give you an environmental health update as well too, since I've been taking over for Amanda for the last six weeks. So lots of phone calls coming in, lots of time transfers, emails, those types of things coming in as well too. So that I have a grasp on. However, I've been getting some phone calls on wells and Iowa code and distances. Unfortunately, I don't feel comfortable enough with Iowa code or measuring that. So I did reach out to Derek from Chickasaw County, and our board just approved a 28E agreement with Chickasaw County for him to be able to help if needed. So the one instance that I did have, reached out to him, he contacted the individual over the phone and was able to help him over the phone and answer his questions. But this is just for future. If there's anything more, I do have that 28E, and they're willing to help out if needed as well too. So, and I figured for future as well too. So our board approved that, so that is in place, and their board approved that as well the same day. So that is available, and I will turn that paperwork over to Amanda when she gets in. I did give her a heads up and just told her that I was going to get a 28E agreement just with my concerns with that and go from there. So otherwise, still moving forward with that. A few changes, still doing our, we kind of changed your name to Wellbeing and Community Health Clinic for when I travel around, so you may hear or see that name more often. Stacyville has just not, I go to library right now, and right now there isn't a lot of people that meet there for any reason. So the population or individuals that come in is pretty low. So starting April, I'll be changing my location to the church. They have mass on Fridays, and so I'll go and after mass just so I can meet a bigger group of people and go in from 9:00 to 9:30 the second Friday of every month. So that'll be a location change starting in April. You guys, Laura sent this report to you guys, right? Okay. Childcare immunization audits, they've been completed. So those had to be completed January 31st and turned into the state. You can see all the results there from the different childcares in our county and those that I audit. Respiratory update, so influenza is really high right now in Mitchell County, very high. So I currently have a nursing home outbreak of influenza, a COVID outbreak in a nursing home. And then we've had a couple of schools at 10% as well too. So lots of respiratory illnesses that are going around. COVID not as high, but flu is pretty high. So, and it's been high for the last five weeks. It's gone down a little, but not much either. So keep an eye on that. Doing lots of follow-up with the nursing homes, education, infection control stuff, and helping them out when needed as well too. Injury prevention, you're gonna see a couple of things that we're working on. Bicycle safety, we're going to do a bicycle rodeo. I wrote a grant and also partnered with the state to get a little over 100 bicycle helmets. And we're going to do a bicycle rodeo coming May. And then also along with that, the state reached out, since Mitchell County is one of the counties that was selected to participate in the High Five Real Traffic Safety Project, they reached out and we don't have a car seat technician in Mitchell County. So they've asked if I wanted to be a technician, and so I will be going down to a four-day class probably this summer sometime. The date isn't put out there yet. And then we'll become a car seat technician, so we can kind of provide those two things together. And since we are a high-traffic safety project, part of that, this will be the education piece of that. So just educating individuals, probably partner with law enforcement and even road stuff as well too once I get a grasp on it and figure out what that entails as well. Narcan, I am doing, or we are pretty together, we're collaborating with Prairie Ridge to do a free Narcan training at the CRC March 13th. I will post these upstairs so individuals can see, and I'll send an email out to you guys if you guys don't mind sharing that as well too. So we offering that free Narcan trading and then having our hidden in plain site room as well there at the CRC for individuals to walk in through. Another training that I'm offering is a free friends and family CPR. So this is a basic CPR, don't need a certification. So for grandparents, babysitters, parents, anyone, high school students, anyone that doesn't need a certification, just going over the basics of CPR, a two-hour course on Saturday, March 15th at the CRC as well too. So a couple of different education resources going out. That'll be happening next month. We submitted our fiscal year '26 local public health services grant. We did get an increase in money, which was nice to see for those grant dollars. It raised a couple thousand dollars, so that was nice to see instead of declining. So that was submitted, and then as well submitted the immunization grant for fiscal year '26. That stayed the same at $8,080 for that grant as well too. North Iowa Area Community Organization, so we've had lots of conversations with them. We're hoping come October. Right now, our WIC clinic in Mitchell County is at the church, our Savers of the Food Church, and they will be bringing that WIC clinic over to the Social Services building. It's one day a month. They'll be changing their days, I believe, to Wednesday. And they come set up and leave. We'll have an air conference room one day a month. It's kind of nice just with, we are all there. You have general assistance. You have the food bank. You have public health there, a one-stop shop to get immunizations, help with, if they need help with rent or anything like that, go to the food bank. All of us are right there too. So that'll be nice that they're going to join in and be at our building as well too. So that won't start until October, until their new grant cycle starts. So there'll be more information when that comes out, but. I think that's like a lot of the highlights, although you guys can refer to the reports. Do you guys have any questions or anything for me on anything?
Keep up the good work.
I actually do.
Yes, yep.
The car seat, I think, is a great, great thing. But I'm sure you thought about this, but you're awful busy. Is that something that somebody might drive up and say, hey, you know, I mean, throughout your day, drive through clinics while they drive through and say, hey, can you adjust my car seat? Or about, do you take your time and take care of that for them? Or that, to me, could be open, and I think it's a great idea, don't get me wrong. But, you know, I think our police force used to do something like that.
I think, oh, HPPD used to have one, but they're not certified anymore. The state says there's no one in the county that is certified for it. And so I want to just keep it open for individuals to just come in. They'd have to call, just because I am in and out of the office a lot. But I would like, would partner with our bicycle rodeo. So when we do that bicycle rodeo for safety, I'd also include that car safety check-in. Or maybe once every two months, we hold on a Saturday for a couple hours for individuals to drive through. But I wouldn't just say, hey, pop in at any time. They either have to call, or we'd offer like little clinics and do it that way. Would be throughout the week going with it. So, yeah, but, and that's why, you know, we kind of talked about that too. It's a lot. We had conversations with the hospital. I'm not sure where they went with it or they are going to go with it or anything either, but still the conversations have been out there. But the state just, I mean, just because I think there's lack of it here. And if we're part of that high-five priority, we should probably have something like that here as well too. So, and with that too, we would get free car seats. So kind of part of the program is to be able to offer to individuals if they don't have the correct car seat, can't afford it, those types of things, which would be huge for the community as well.
So Jessa did, in connection to that, so if we can reach out and get another technician to train at the same time you do, either from the hospital or the sheriff's department, because, you know, we've talked that, that resources are stretched within your office, and there's a lot of programs that are outreach to community. I don't know that people realize all the things that you do there. So maybe if we can, see if we can, and I can help you with that.
Like I said, we're going to talk with the hospital. I know they were talking about being one individual, they have a trauma, individual in the ER that was possibly going to go as well too. So, but for them too, it's not like she's there every day, and they can just drive up. So it'd be us partnering, having these little, every other Saturday clinics of housing that as well. Or nice, we're not a delivery hospital either, so it's not like they go home and they see that. A lot of the clinics or hospitals are pretty good about checking that before you leave after having a baby as well too. So, but just keeping that eye on it as they grow and educating them that this is, they can't transition to the next car seat or, you know, further away, they need to be in this car seat, those types of things. So just having that education and pushing more resources out there. So whether it be at the fair, you know, we're there a lot too, and maybe do a drive-through thing there, or more educational resources there as well too. So just having that education piece is going to be huge too. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or anything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number nine, approve fireworks permit. We have a permit in front of us, flashing thunder fireworks for July 3rd, 2025. Rain date, July 6th, 2025, from 9:30 PM to 10:30 PM. It looks like we have all of the insurance and liability. Sir, motion to approve? Firework permit.
Make a motion to approve the fireworks permit for 3rd of July?
Mark made a motion. Is there a second?
I have a second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, Tom.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Sidney.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Motion passes. Discussion and possible action on Kent Kettleton infill lot application. Everyone get a chance to look it over? Looks like it's for 1002 State Streets. Is that burned-down house that Kent bought last year? Or $10,000?
Yeah, I, um, I think the city's been on him pretty heavy to get that out. And he was kind of waiting, you know, because it was winter time, but.
I heard he couldn't get it transferred to him because he was trying to get signatures from the previous owner. He couldn't get in touch with them.
Oh, okay.
I heard that's why it was, it took this long. So, but now I think everything looks good. It's got a deed and everything, so.
Right, yeah. And the city's, it's quite an eyesore, so they've been on him pretty hard to get, so.
Yeah.
I think it's a very good one.
Yeah. Sir, motion to approve? Is there a motion to approve?
I move to approve Kent Kettleson's infill lot application for ten oh two State Street, Osage.
Pam made a motion, so second. Mark. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Pam.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Sydney.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Motion passes. Oh, set proposed tax levy public hearing date. Rachel and I talked, and we have a date of March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, at nine AM. And we're doing it super early now, because the press news moved up their deadline to March or June, the Tuesday at eleven o'clock, the week before the paper comes out, so, not getting any time to put it together, it's not done by eleven today. So until next Tuesday at eleven, good.
So I have that on a Monday.
Yes, so this has to be completely separate from a meeting. Yep, and then the following day of Tuesday, then we can set the public hearing for the whole month, too. Yep.
And so on Monday, the twenty fourth, that's all, it'll be on the agenda, just that.
Yep. Okay, yep.
I will move to make that motion.
Tom made a motion, is there a second?
I seconded.
Pam, second. Any further discussion?
Roll call, Jim.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Sydney. Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Pam.
Aye.
Motion passes. Oh, move on to meetings attended.
I had nothing.
Jim is? I probably should have said this in department head. Sorry, I was not thinking. I had the Mitchell County Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. It was a very well discussion with that commission board. They did not make any action. They wanna have more information gathered. I said I will gather information with all the other counties to see who they use to put together their ordinance. There was a gentleman, I think.
Jim Lippel.
Jim Lippel?
Yeah.
Down in Des Moines, that's been doing a lot of these, so I need to reach out to him. And they also want to know how much it would cost for NICOG to write ordinance again. So I need to reach out to NICOG and get all this information. Aaron, Aaron was there, he was very open to them and told them, answered any other questions. They just kept saying, we need to keep contacting our senators, led strangers, and just to, we'll have a meeting again April second. That's when Amanda will be back, and I'll have all this information that they wanted me to gather and go over that. That was a very well meeting, they said over and over again, they didn't know if they were capable enough to put in ordinance together, so that's why they wanted me to reach out to NICOG again, and that it is such a long and hard process at times, so. I'm glad they kind of recognized some of that stuff, and they know that they can't do it by themselves. I had also that night a nine one one and emergency management meeting. Chris went over his budget, we approved an appointed chair, vice chair, and coordinators, he discussed possible, he's looking into possibly purchasing more drugs, so we're looking at a few of those. And I also had a Mitchell County Emergency Preparedness Coalition meeting at the fire station. This was put together by Chris, Laura, and Jessa, and it's, we're trying to put together information of, to bring Mitchell County partners to collaborate, plan, coordinate, execute effective response strategies. So they put together a nice little spreadsheet for us to go through and put in what we think our needs are for the county to do tabletop exercises, or exercises out in the community and prepared, and see what everyone else has that would be accessible to be used if something would happen here, a disaster. And they've got a grant, it's called, what was it?
Oh, the Salamander.
Salamander, yes. Salamander grant, and so then they get to, they can now print these ID tags, and it's, all public officials will get their ID tags, so if there's something that drastically happened and they wouldn't allow, we were out of the county, and they wouldn't allow us in the county, we could have these tags with us at all times. And they, they can scan it and let us in the county, knowing that we need to get there and be a part of whatever is going on at that time, so. That was very good, we're gonna put information together. Jessa said that she would be able to print everything for us and get those tags sent to us. And then when, if we were not public officials anymore, there's just a, a thing that we can hit, and it will disengage, and we won't be able to use it anymore, so we don't have to track those tags down and return them. So that was very good. Thank you.
Okay. I was at the Emergency Preparedness Coalition meeting along with Sydney, and, you know, they talked about things like, you know, tracking who, where they have access to equipment or generators, that kind of thing. So it's a pretty massive undertaking that they're, they're working on, and so I learned a lot, and, and they have the spreadsheet with all the questions that they're filling out. I think I'm still a little unclear as to whether just the, just the, okay, so it's just the two of us supervisors then, that, that fill out that, that form, and kind of reply on how prepared we think we are in our, our communities right now. I was also at the planning and zoning meeting. I just want to add and note that Sydney and, and Aaron did a good job of heading up that meeting along with the four committee members that were present and one online, and that it, it was a no public comment, so I think that helped to, you know, just air questions and, and concerns between the, the committee. They are short an individual on that committee, and they brought that up, that they've had a committee member that has, has passed away, and so we may need to actually put that on the agenda, if you would, Rachel, that we have to, we are responsible for the board of supervisors, is that correct?
I can't remember which, which one it was, it was one of her boards we approved.
I thought it got moved to five, but I don't know how the bylaws things work for that, if they need to do something. So they were asking for that.
Yeah.
It was an, oh, and by the way, Rachel had, or Sydney headed to another meeting, so. So I said that I would add that to the.
I can't remember when we did that, was it last year? I think we moved that to five.
It was a year or two ago, I don't know.
Yeah, so we'll have to.
So we need to maybe check that, see what we have on that, because their concern was that they were short a member, and we needed to appoint another individual on that board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I forgot to look into that.
No, that's, no, that's, that's quite all right, it was kind of a, you know, we had quite a bit of conversation during the meeting, and, and that came up at the, at the end of the meeting. The other one was a Heartland Insurance Zoom call, and I'll let Mark take the lead on that, because he was also on that meeting. And, but there again, I learned an awful lot about multiple forms and spreadsheets, and different things when they were talking about Heartland's insurance and any kind of program, you know, any kind of shooting ranges, or any of those kinds of things, conservation things, activities. You know, unfortunately, we've reached a point where everybody's a little bit eager to, to throw a lawsuit down, so they want to make sure that we have, the big concern was equipment, making sure that we get our equipment and all of our assets listed accurately, so that's, that's the end for me.
Pam, so we had a Heartland Insurance meeting, and they went over the policy, I gotta fill it out, and our properties, some of them are listed, and some of them are listed for as much as we need them to be insured for, and yeah, there's a lot, a lot to it, I guess.
Yeah.
I also attended the planning zoning meeting. I think they, guys did a good job, there was a lot of eager to speak, but yet did a good job on, it was for the board only, so. And then I had a FMC decat meeting, went through the F five twenty five financials. No, no new news on the realignment as of last week. And the community planning, they had movie nights for the area, and we have an opportunity, I believe, to move some money from one entity to a few others, because it's just not getting spent down, so. Hopefully, the next month, we will know for sure if that can happen. And it was interesting that some of the board members were in on a as being on a meeting with Northeast Iowa Food Bank, which they thought was a, they kind of gave a little update on, on the food bank, and ironically, last week, they were here with us, so. That was it.
All right. Your management plan?
Riverview Livestock, thirty five eighty nine Addison Avenue, Riceville, Harvey Martin, twenty nine forty one hundred and twentieth Streets, Charles City, Freezen N, N one site, forty five eighty six, Highway two eighteen, San Yansker, Freezen two site, four hundred and sixty fifth Street, San Yansker, Freezen six site, three hundred and eighty fifth Street, Osage, Freezen seven site, forty six seventy two Glass Avenue, San Yansker, and New Haven site, thirty six fifty one, that Avenue, Osage.
Thank you. Public comments?
Well, I guess I have something, does Shannon, they can't print off our ID cards anymore, correct? That one way? Rachel, do you know anything?
I would guess they probably didn't sell it, no.
Well, those ID cards, when we, I first got hired, six years ago, we got, it looks like a driver's license. Yeah, the county card, and so I think the Salamander to lead up to that is going to lead into that, because they don't print those cards anymore. So I, I think our, one talking issue, and then our decision behind it would have all county employees have a ID card to be able to, to get in and, and continue operations, those types of things as well, too, if needed. So, it would just be for certain individuals, that will kind of take it back off of the, the ID card. But there'll be way more information coming up, because I can't create all those ID cards myself any more time. So I'll be department heads, we'll do that, too. So, once we get the hang of it, and I get training on it, we'll push things out and educate as much on that, too. So that'll kind of replace what we have for.
Shannon did state, state is not allowed anymore.
Okay, yeah, I, I thought that was okay, so we, and we briefly had a conversation on it. And so this would, every employee that would come in would get basically an ID card, letting them know that they are, they work for the county. And so we do roles, we do everyone, as well, too, so, as well as all fire departments, EMS, volunteer, every, everyone throughout Mitchell County, just their key into the county type of thing, so. And then if they leave or aren't to volunteer anymore, will be activated, so if they try to come in the county, they'll scan it, and they'll say the cards be activated, so the individual, you know, help you, can't come in or, you're not in that role anymore, those types of things as well, too, so.
Yeah, I was gonna mention, maybe reach out to Joe Krucos, the fire chief, I know, and I was on there, we had these, in case we were coming from Mason City and could help, seeing as seen, even direct traffic, you always had that card with you, and I don't even, I don't know if we got them through the driver's license station, or.
And they are part of this coalition, so we have all firefighters, EMS, hospitals, schools, supervisors. We have a big group of people coming together, and then we'll bring people in, so if we decide that we want to discuss, you know, winter weather, fire and rich, and okay, you know, this is what we need if there's an emergency, you know, whatever it may be, or we'll bring people in as needed for different tabletops and those types of things, but they did discuss for the firefighters having maybe two cards, one on them, and then where they can easily pull out of their coat that they're wearing, or, and then one for their wallet, just so they have a couple of different options, so they didn't have to take, remember to bring theirs with and their suit and stuff like that, too, so. A good collaboration, and then maybe if we talk about resources, we have a bunch of resources throughout the county. Nice to know where those resources are, and then knowing the people on the ground, so. You know, if something were to happen, hey, we have several nurses that maybe can come and help, triage, you know, do something if there is an emergency. I mean, kind of sharing those resources, and all that, so, so, it'll be a good collaboration with everyone. Thank you.
Any more public comments?
We're gonna cover city officials, too.
Yes, yeah, so the mayors are involved, we invited you, and you weren't there. See, if the mayors are involved, yes, all city officials, so your staff there on TME, and we'll have a card as well, too, yes, everyone will be involved, and your C homes are in part of the, part of the coalition as well, so.
All right. I think we'll adjourn the meeting at nine seventeen.